Good morning. It is Tuesday, March 19th. I'll call to order the Board of Supervisors meetings. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
No move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Agenda is adopted. Now's the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone would like to make public comment, please come forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Not seeing anyone come on forward. We'll close public comment number one. It will go on to agency reports. We have information on update on the Story County Community Foundation and grants from Karen Sevdy and Darryl Vaggy. You'll want to just push the buttons till they turn green.
Good morning. I'm Karen Sevdy. I'm an Executive Director for the Story County Community Foundation.
And good morning. I'm Darryl Vaggy. I'm a donor relations for the Story County Community Foundation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. We just want to introduce ourselves. We're both just under a year in our positions and we want to just explain a little bit what our foundation does, not just for Ames, but for the county and the communities that we serve.
I think what Karen said, it's important that we are countywide, so 14 communities within the county, that we try and serve everybody. And if you take a look, you'll see our Board of Directors comes from about all corners of the county. So I think we do two things. We give out grants, we give money away, and we also work with, we also work with charitable funds. So I'll let Karen talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, I'll talk about the grants. The grants, currently we've given about $2 million in grants in the 18 years, 19 years that we've been in business, so to speak. We have about 3 million, 33 million in endowments that we house. We are an affiliate with the Des Moines Foundation. So the Des Moines Foundation accesses our investors and last year made about a 15% gain, which is better than the year before. But we do reach out, last year we gave out $152,000 in grants. This year, we're probably going to be upward toward 160,000 in community grants for various projects around the county.
Most of the projects are with organizations that are kind of local, but thinking about Story County itself, a few years back, we gave to the Sheriff's Department, we've given to the Story County Medical Center, and probably a big one was to McFarland Park. There's a playground that's out there by the office building. As far as, as far as different funds, we have donor advised funds. So if you, it makes it really easy in tax time. So that's for personal and for other funds, agency funds, organizations like the Camelot Theater here, the new windows that you see up front, which make it look pretty spiffy. So a lot of different organizations use this to collect funds and then to do good, good things for the organization. NAMI is one, a lot of other ones too.
Yep. A recent one is the Colo-NESCO Education Fund where they give out scholarships to Colo-NESCO seniors. So we do have some scholarship funds. We have Colo Fire Department received funds for an addition to their fire station to house more of their equipment. We were just down to Collins and Maxwell to see improvements to their parks and various buildings throughout their communities, so.
Let me just ask you, if you see opportunities for us, maybe promote us a little bit. It's not for us, but it's for the citizens and communities of Story County that we'd like to do some good.
Do you have any questions?
I have a couple. One, if folks wanted to apply for a grant, do they go to your, how do they know about it and what your criteria is for your grant?
Right. You can go to our website, storycountyfoundation.org, and the guidelines and the application is online.
And then my second question is, and related to, I think it's your qualified, your endowed funds. So if folks give money to that, to an organization, to the endowed funds, isn't there some sort of tax credit they can receive, or how does that?
We're going to ask you to come along on the tour here. Yes, there is. So if you do give to a permanent endowment fund, given through the Story County or any community foundation in Iowa, there is a 25% Iowa tax credit. So if you were to give $1,000 to one of those permanent funds, you'll get a $250 tax credit against your Iowa taxes. So that's a pretty big, significant benefit.
Has to be an endowed Iowa qualified fund.
Gotcha.
Versus an agency fund.
No, regular agency.
Thanks for the questions.
Other questions?
Do you accept grants at any time of the year, or do you have a certain deadline or process?
For the grants?
Yeah.
The deadline this year will be September 16th.
Okay.
And the grant applications will be open toward the end of May. But yes, you can apply anytime if you have a project. And they're up, they're from $500 to $25,000.
You said you grant the money by the end of next May?
No, the money actually, the applications are due September 16th. There's a review process and they are actually awarded by the first of November.
First of November, okay.
Yes, but the, but the actual projects then will need to be completed by August 31st of next year.
Thank you.
What is the difference then between the endowed Iowa qualified funds and the non-qualified agency funds? Because I see there are several agencies that are listed in both places.
Well, that's a good question. As far as the fund goes, if it's an endowed Iowa qualified fund, it is a permanent one. It's going to be there for as long as that organization is there. And you can withdraw up to 5% of the balance per year. So with that, and then with the reinvestment of what remains, it's going to last for a long, long time. But 5% is the maximum that you can withdraw each year. And then the other thing for the donors that give to that fund is they are then eligible for that 25% Iowa tax credit.
And that, but the agency fund itself, we'll just take Boys and Girls Club and their building campaign. They have a fund they can establish to gather money for, specifically for that project.
Okay.
And then at the end, they can withdraw that entire amount to pay those, to pay that building.
Okay, okay. So it's not restricted funds.
Correct.
If someone donates to that one. Gotcha. Thank you. When I was looking through the information that you had shared before to put on the agenda, I knew you did a lot of good work, but I was not aware that you were, that you spread it out so well throughout the entire county.
We're very deliberate in reaching out and trying to get organizations, you know, there are a lot of hidden foundations throughout the county. And we're trying to really reach out to those folks to really take a look, invest in, and the, through the organization. And we can help build those funds for them.
That's great. It shows. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Thank you very much for being here.
Coming today.
Thanks for the questions and thanks for the time.
Next, we'll move on. We've got the City of Colo ARPA Annual Report.
Good morning.
You want to, yep.
Okay, so you're just wanting an update on where we're at, I'm assuming?
Uh huh.
So with the help of Greg, we are now talking to an engineer to come out with a flat of what the lots and things are going to look like. We will hopefully be able to have everything wrapped up with a developer by fall, and then by spring, we will break ground for lots to be sold and developed. So it's a good, good thing.
Exciting.
Mm-hmm. It is, because we haven't done this in years. So, yeah, then we thank you for the funds that you have given us. Any questions?
How many lots?
We don't know. I would assume.
Ish.
Thirty, forty, thirty?
Range?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, yes. Yep. Which is huge.
Huge.
Yep. So now if people just move to Colo and keep their kids in our school district.
Right.
It'll help.
It will help. Yes, yes. So nope, we're excited. Can actually see the light at the end of the tunnel.
And you don't have any concerns about being able to use those funds by the deadline?
No, no, we should be good. Yep.
That was asked my question.
That's what we're, yeah.
If not, I'll be back.
That's helpful.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like we have Child Serve Annual Report and Child Serves ARPA 2024 Annual Report. Good morning, Kate.
Good morning.
Does sound loud to you, yep.
Okay, I will go through just our kind of annual update, and then we can talk further on the ARPA funds and our kitchen project. Hopefully you got the report that I submitted last, last week. A couple of things to just point out. The numbers that are contained in this report are data from our 2223 fiscal year. So those are pre-expansion. So we had a large expansion project that did open up and we began services out of there in September of 2023. So expansion growth will not be captured in our data until next year. We are excited that we're seeing some movement in hiring, secondary to having that space open up, which is, it's been a few years since I've been able to celebrate that. So particularly in our outpatient therapy, which does have our largest waiting lists and highest need for cycling through. So we're pretty excited to see some movement in that. Other things that happened over this last year that are fun and unique to the Ames Child Serve, we did go through the state's childcare accreditation process that did change from I, QRS, and it is now IQ 4K. That was a pretty involved process, but we were happy to get through that. We do have a three, level three rating, and we hope to achieve a level four, is what we're planning for, for the next year. We also just recently went through another CARF survey, which is rehab facility accreditation process. We currently hold a three-year accreditation, and in February, we sat through a three-day process to renew that, hopefully for another three years. The other exciting thing is we did, through the chamber here in Ames, receive a Project Impact Award related to that expansion project. Some other numbers, we are up to 29 counties in Iowa that we are serving families and children from. Last year, we served just over 900, so we hope to be breaking the thousand mark with this new fiscal year. And we have almost 180 staff currently. The project that, our large expansion project, did allow us to expand outpatient therapy significantly. We also had a large focus on our autism services, so our Applied Behavioral Analysis Program, and our Autism Day Program expanded and just created more space than for our other programs that had been sharing up until that point. We did receive money from Story County through ARPA funds for a kitchen renovation project. We put that on hold until our project had, our major expansion project has ended, so that we could then turn our attention and focus on the kitchen project. So we are now at the point we have posted the bids. I believe that was January and February, had two companies reply. They put some placeholders in for appliances, which is a large part of this project. So we are waiting for our second quote from a company for appliances, so that we can then get cut sheets to the construction teams and they can redo the bids based on where electric and that kind of stuff is. There'll be a significant amount of, we'll need to add to the electrical panel, we'll need to put in some different drainage, venting and stuff, just to get everything where it needs to be with the more commercial grade equipment. So we have chosen appliances, and once those contractors return their bids to us with that new information, then we'll be able to set a date and get moving. And we expect the drawdown for that to be pretty fast and furious once we, once we get going. So our biggest project right now is to plan how we will continue to provide food during the construction project. So we're working on that.
Food trucks.
My staff would absolutely love that. I'm not sure the kids would, unless they have lots of peanut butter and jelly food trucks. Any questions that I could answer for you right now?
What's your best guess is when your kitchen project will be complete?
I would like to see it start this summer and would hope by the end of the calendar year that we're done. And we will, we provide written reports. So we should be able to update that as soon as we get a timeline on there as well. Our start date will really depend on the contractor and the subcontractor and their availability. We'd like that to not be drawn out. So we think everything to happen as quickly as possible, just because it shares walls with several programs and it's a fairly large inconvenience to not have a working kitchen.
Right. When, when do you think you'll hear about your CARF certification? How long does it usually take for?
Exit results were, we had an exit survey during the survey tour and had maybe five recommendations that we'll work on, over 1,400 standards that we reviewed with them. So that was pretty exciting. I believe that they said it would take up to two months for the actual written report to come through.
Not bad.
Yeah. Six, six surveyors came, so they were able to really distribute the work.
I know, it's a lot.
It is.
I don't have any questions. Doesn't have any others? Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on. We've got the Access Annual Report.
Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Lisa Diggs. I'm currently the Finance Manager and also serving as Co-Interim Executive Director with Access Assault Care Center. Our main office is located in Ames, and we also serve five counties. We serve Boone, Green, Story, Marshall, and Tama Counties. So I'm here today to talk about our funding that we've received through the asset process. I think we, as an agency, over the past several years, just being in the crisis agency field, we see a lot of turnover. We saw a lot of turnover during the pandemic, and since the pandemic, it seems like people have had just many different options for jobs. So we have really, one of our main concerns over the last several years has been maintaining an adequate staff. So we've had some staffing shortages, but I am happy to report, just looking at our, our numbers over the past fiscal year and looking at our projections that we submitted with our asset application, we're going to hit the numbers that we had projected, even with shortened staff. We've kind of figured out throughout the last year how to be more efficient and still serve our clients in, in the best fashion that we can. So one thing that we have kind of done is prioritize direct service to clients. We also have funding for programming and outreach and education. We're still doing all those services, but when we have times of short staff, we do prioritize the direct service to clients and maintaining an adequate staff to be able to do that. So that's one area that we might fall a little bit short, but we have utilized for many years interns from Iowa State, and we're kind of working right now to, to utilize their assets of connections within the university and the City of Ames community to help us with some of those programming outreach opportunities. I think it's very important to continue serving clients in the capacity that we always have, and that's a real commitment that, that the agency has moving forward. And I submitted the report with details of all the different services that we provide, domestic abuse, sexual abuse, homicide and other violent crimes. We serve those survivors in capacities with crisis counseling. We also have a very robust housing program. We have sheltering. We have a duplex located in Ames where we house individuals who are fleeing violent and looking for a little bit of time to get their feet under them so that they can branch out into their own safe location. And we use asset funding to help us with that crisis counseling. We don't use asset funding for rental assistance. That's provided through other means, but that is, is a great use of those, of those funds. Does anybody have any questions about the services that we provide or the report that I've submitted?
How long is a typical, do you have a typical length of stay in your, in your shelter?
We don't really have a typical length of stay. We, we have a goal of a limit of 30 days. It's not a specific limit, but it's kind of something that we, that we shoot for. Honestly, it really varies depending on the needs of our clients. We have some clients who, who go through trauma and they're able to focus very quickly and know what they want to do. They may have had it in the back of their mind for a long time, so they might need only a couple days to get things going and to get moving and move in with family or, or find a new location. We have others that it might take many months. There might be extreme barriers as far as language, securing employment. So those are things that we will work with them on an extended basis to help them get the, the services that they need in the meantime, help them secure childcare for their children so that they're able to go out into the community and find employment to help them stabilize, to be able to eventually pay their rent and utilities on their own. So we shoot for a 30-day, but it doesn't always happen that way. That's kind of the average.
So you're still maintaining what I would call a traditional shelter in addition to using motel beds?
We have, our, our, we have scattered site.
It's all scattered.
Down. So we have a duplex, and then we have several apartments that are in different locations in Ames, rather than having one big shelter unit. We're kind of in the scattered site. And then we also use the hoteling. We use hoteling sometimes. Hotels are used if there's a crisis that occurs in the middle of the night, and often it's, it's easiest to, to place that individual into a hotel and then the next day move them into the shelter if that's the appropriate location.
So with the scattered sites, are you still using volunteers to the extent that you did when you had a traditional shelter? I was just thinking about you talking about staffing, and I just wondered what your volunteer component looked like now?
Yeah, we have, we do have volunteers. In the past, we have had volunteers that stayed at the shelter unit when we had a bigger unit, and that's something that we have moved away with, but we're using volunteers and interns. The interns through Iowa State are a big portion of our volunteers that we work with, and they actually help with the clients in the shelter and doing all the needed grocery runs, helping with, if there's a crisis in the shelter, just having someone there to be able to talk with clients and kind of help them through whatever situations that arise. So we are using volunteers, not to the extent that we did in the past. And, and currently, we have, we have a few more restrictions on volunteers that we did in the past, based on some of our other funding, government funding. So they have to be fully certified, they have to be fully trained as staff do. So it's a little more difficult than it had been in the past to just have anyone come into the shelter in order to work with children. They have to have background, a full background check done. So there, it's a little more difficult to utilize as many volunteers as we had in the past.
Used to be 32 hours of training. Is that still the requirement?
We do have 32 hours of training, but we also have, they have to have the, the advanced training that, that our staff does too, if they're there for a while, just due to our, our, our restrictions for funding.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
My question is more related to the ARPA funding.
Okay, sure.
Wondering kind of where you're at and drawing down those funds.
Yes, we, so we started utilizing the funds in August of 2022. We've been slow to submit the claims just due to all of our transition. During that time, we had transitioned a new Executive Director in, and we had, we had put a pause on financial assistance that we, that we were giving to clients, just to give the new director time to come in, get her, her feet under her and get staff trained. I myself was also working part-time at that time. So we just had limited administrative capacity. We were still serving the clients as far as crisis counseling and sheltering and all of that. We just weren't doing the financial assistance until about October of 2022. So recently, we have started submitting our claims. I've got claims submitted through October of 2022, and the goal is to have everything updated and complete by the time the quarterly report is due April 4th. All the information's there. It's just a matter of getting, getting it submitted, and we're just to the point now where we have our feet under us, and we had our site visit with Bryce and Leanne, and are moving forward. I did bring some documentation today of, of where we are in the process. We are, we've spent approximately 210,000 as of December of 2023. So those claims will be sent for reimbursement by April 5th. And our current plan, as we have submitted, has us spending those funds out by June of 2026. In reality, depending on other funding, we could likely, likely spend that out prior to that. June of 2026 would be the absolute latest.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That was my question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We've got consideration of the March 12, 2024 minutes and the March 12, 2024 Canvas Minutes.
I would.
Want those done separately, Shelley, or together, or does it? Okay, okay.
I'm of approval of both sets of minutes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Consideration of Personnel Actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Consent Agenda. Anyone pulling anything from consent, or if not?
Item of approval of Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Now's time for, making sure we are at public hearing. Now's time for the public hearing, first consideration of ordinance 317, amending Chapter 85, general provisions and definitions, Chapter 86, district requirements, Chapter 87, land revision requirements, Chapter 88, and general site and planning standards in Chapter 92 Administration, the Story Code, Code of Ordinances, Land and Development Regulations. Boy, that's a mouthful.
It is. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is still morning after I said all that, huh?
Thank you, Bryce. The item before you is essentially a cleanup ordinance. It's not the official cleanup ordinance that staff, planning and development staff will be bringing forward to the board later this calendar year, but we are made aware that certain provisions of previous ordinances were not actually incorporated into the online code of ordinances. And so this is to go back and to correct that oversight and make sure we have the most current and adaptive regulations online. In addition, past couple of years, you took action to remove the RSE overlay district. We did not remove all the, all the references to that district to our ordinance, nor did we remove all the references to Ames or infringed plans. So really, this is, in essence, a simple cleanup, but we cannot wait until but we cannot wait until the regular cleanup because we are missing some key information that we need to have in our ordinance right now, and I'll touch on that. Um, if you want to go to the next one. So again, this is a text amendment to all those sections of the code of ordinances that Supervisor Haddon's listed out for the benefit of the audience, I will not repeat those, but it is throughout the entire code of, uh, land development regulations essentially. Just going to go through highlight of each of the sections, feel free to ask me questions as we're going. But regarding chapter eighty-five, that is our general provisions and definitions chapter of the code of ordinances. The, at some point, the definition for antenna height was dropped and we need to add that back in. And we found previous iterations where it was in there and somehow it, through editing, it was removed. Just some cleanup ordinance on table alignment, that's what the next bullet point is for table eighty-five point one. Not revising our Lisa, but just cleaning it up the way it's, what it references. And then we have, see, these are sometimes really major, major changes. We, on lot four, we reference it in the definition of front lot line, but we don't show it on the figure. So we need to do simple things like that to really help the public and, and all of us understand our regulations. Regarding chapter eighty-six, the district regulations. The two big changes, when you look at the draft, there's a lot strikeouts and underlines that is for removing the R C district and the Ames or infringe plan references throughout that section. But we have tables eighty-six point, or eighty-six five, eighty-six six, and eighty-six ten that with the last codification project, they were incorrectly put in. So we need to, to correct those bulk requirements. On chapters eighty-seven and eighty-eight, both, um, rem- removing references to the Ames or infringe plan. And then again, on chapter eighty-eight, the general site planning standards, removing the R C overlay district since we don't have that anymore. And then correcting language that was omitted with the last round of changes to section eighty-eight point zero three. There are subsections three to eleven that talk about lots. And through the online codification, those are just removed. And we definitely need to have those in, they're very important sets of regulations. And the board did not take action to remove them, they simply were, um, when, when the regulate, when the ordinance was sent to the codification company, they weren't included and so they were not put online. And then chapter ninety-two, the last change is to the R C overlay district, removing the, that reference. As you know from seeing text amendments in the past, all text amendments must adhere to the standards for approval in section ninety-two point oh seven, subsection two, there are two. We look at conformity with the cornerstone to capstone, C two C plan. And then we look at the overall conformance with the general purpose and scope of having land development regulations. Staff did identify the goals that are applicable from the C two C plan, those are on the screen. We did find it does meet the intention of those two goals. Uh, legal notices were published in the paper as required. They were published on February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Identifying the proposed changes. In addition, um, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the staff recommendation and analysis was presented. If you want to go to the next one. And they to provide a recommendation on the March sixth, twenty twenty-four that the board supervisors adopt the ordinance on first consideration. And then the last one. Your alternatives are up there on the screen. Staff does recommend adoption of ordinance three seventeen on first consideration. And we do recommend waiving second, third, because we need to get these changes to the paper and, and make sure we, especially those sections three to eleven that we're missing are, are on the online version.
Have you had any comments on the changes?
Not received any public comment, no.
Figured that, okay.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment, if you're online, please raise your hand online or come up to the podium. Make public comment. All right, seeing, we'll close public, the public hearings, excuse me, public hearing, not public comment, but public hearing. We'll close the public hearing, uh, since I see no one coming forward or raising their hand on Zoom. Any other questions or comments, or if not, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance three seventeen on first consideration and that we waive second and third consideration.
Second. Been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Approved. Thanks, Leanne.
Thanks for the work.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to additional items, discussion and consideration of resolution twenty-four dash six five. The Ross Farms subdivision, residential parcel subdivision. Good morning, Marcus.
Good morning. Good morning, Board. All right, so before you all today is a residential parcel subdivision. We do these from time to time. I did want to make one note, the updated, the, the final plat and the preliminary plat, the preliminary plat was what? Got posted to the Agenda Center, but your updated packet has the actual final plat in it, so that's the one you'll be acting on today. So this request is for?
Can you put your mic just a little bit closer? Thank you.
So this is for residential parcel subdivision. Um, the parcel is located just south of Colo off two hundred and sixtieth street. And we did property research on this and identified that it would meet the standards for residential parcel subdivision. Um, you can see it's just out there. So there is the proposed subdivision. On, they both have access already taken on the southern portion here. There was a drive that connected the two, um, they took that out. And so they both have their own access, so that's why there's no access easement between the two. Um, and there's no new accesses proposed here. Um, the lot one has that current existing dwelling on it, which makes it so we can do the residential parcel be an acre without road right away. And then eleven point zero seven acres on proposed lot two, which will be considered buildable. And with residential parcel subdivisions, all the standards have to be met, um, in eighty-seven oh seven, and they do. We mailed out notices on March eleventh. Um, we did not receive any comments prior to this meeting. I do know that there's a couple of people in the room that are here that received the notices. Um, so just that, that's known. And again, for our analysis, meets all the standards and it doesn't impact any critical natural resource areas and matches the designation still within the agricultural conservation area of the C two C map. Um, so there's, we are recommending one condition, so City of Colo is within two miles. They have to either waive or approve the subdivision. I've spoken with the city and it's going to go on their April first meeting and they plan to waive their review. So we just wouldn't take anything for recording until after we have that signed waiver, waiver of their review. And with that, staff is recommending option two, which is the approval with that condition. Here for any questions, the applicant is also here along with a couple of other people from the public, so.
Marcus, I know from the memo, there was concern about it making sure that it was named Ross Farms instead of Ross subdivision, has that been?
It's all Ross Farms, yep.
Okay, so we don't need to include that in our motion as?
It's, all the documents, everything I've read through, it's, it's all Ross Farms. So, um, that was an initial comment that was updated.
Okay.
Any questions, Supervisor?
I have no questions.
I don't have any additional questions.
Uh, I would move approval of resolution twenty-four sixty-five.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye.
With conditions.
With conditions.
Conditions.
Sorry, yes. I said it in my head, with conditions.
Thank you, Board.
Thanks.
Hey, moving on, we have no departmental reports or other reports, any upcoming agenda items?
Nope.
No? Okay, uh, discussion, consideration of construction cost estimate for the Story County Office Range House. Good morning, Jovi. Morning, Nick.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, how are you?
Okay, I got Jeff Harris with me from R M H Architects. He helped provide the cost estimate. We got Captain Lenny here as well for specific questions. We kinda went back through our initial, um, construction cost estimate and, um, tried to get it down below that million dollar threshold is kind of where we were at. If you look through it, um, the total cost estimate with alternatives, which the alternatives is a covered patio with, uh, concrete underneath of it. This estimate that we're looking at for the one million twenty-two thousand includes all design, engineering and construction administration fees. We wanted to capture total out the door cost. That includes, uh, um, a ten percent contingency of ninety-five thousand dollars. So if we were to remove the alternates, we, you know, they're just under fifty thousand total in alternatives, um, or just over fifty thousand. My, my bad, um. That would put us under that million dollar threshold total out the door. Kind of at this point, I think we've taken it as far as we can, as far as we've reduced interior finishes down to pretty much the bare minimum that it could be. If the board is entertaining constructing this facility, I think at this point, kind of like we've done in other projects, it's a no cost option to put it out for bid and see what actual construction costs would be.
And we could put it out with both?
Yeah, we would list the alternate.
Yeah, okay.
Add to the base bid, basically, base bid would be without the covered patio and concrete. And we would just have them list the cost to put the canopy and put the concrete under, in lieu of, yeah, basically.
Yeah, and we can do that either way. I mean, we can bid that as the base bid, sometimes we get better bids if we include that in the base and do them as D D X. It's always, it's kind of a toss-up one way or the other, but.
Gotcha.
Identify those costs so we can isolate those if we need to.
I, I appreciate all the work that, um, everyone did to, you know, bring it, bring it down to where, where it is now. And I recognize that it, this, this is, this is where we're at, if we're going to build a building, that makes sense, right?
Yeah, I think that at this point, um, I don't, I don't feel, and, and Captain Lenny can speak to that, there, I don't feel there's any more we could, um, remove from this project. We've got it to the, pretty the very basics of it. You know, some of it even is, you know, reutilizing existing equipment that the sheriff's office already has, like air compressors and things like that to reduce the overall construction cost. And look at doing some of the furnishings in-house in lieu of, you know, like the cleaning stations and things like that, so.
I don't have any questions at this.
Um, I'm sure we've talked about this. There are other county employees out there at IRV M and they don't have access to, um, a shelter for severe weather, correct?
They do not currently have a severe weather shelter, that's why I've incorporated one in here.
And it's understood that they would have access to this building in case there was severe weather.
That is correct, yeah, any, any county employee that would be out there should have access to that portion where the severe weather, um, shelter would be located.
How would that be done? Just by a fob?
At this point, we would do that with keys. We have room in our current key bases and that we could, um, allow them to gain access to the, um, severe weather area, but further access into the facility would be done with a higher level key. Now if, because there's plans to get fiber optics down that road. And I think if that happens in the future, we would probably add keyless entry to the facility. But in this rendition, since the fiber doesn't exist out there yet, we, we excluded that. But we could handle that with our key system.
Gotcha.
To allow IRV M to have access to the facility.
Yeah, just an aside, but with, um, Colo Tel going by there, the fiber would be a minimal amount for hookup at this point.
Yes.
Compared to what?
Because I know the tentative plan is to bring it right down the gravel road that's adjacent to the.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so we need, you know, my personal opinion, yeah, we could take advantage.
And we would probably add other systems to the facility once we have that internet access. Because then we can, you know, the cost wouldn't be as great as like right now when we, some of the first estimates included running our own fiber cable.
Thirty.
Yeah, like thirty-eight thousand.
Forty thousand, yeah.
Get one from this facility to the engineer's complex, but with Colo Telephone adding that.
Yeah, the fact that they got the funding to do that was really.
Yeah, so.
Helpful at this time, okay.
Yeah, and as far as operating cost in the future, if we added those systems, it would be about six thousand dollars annually. And that would be keyless entry, cameras, um, fire monitoring, that kind of stuff.
And does this design allow for additions in the future? Because I know we talked about that too, that sometime down the road, we might be talking about expansion.
Yeah, we went with, uh, think of it as a, kind of like a pole building type structure, because that gives us the lowest cost option to add on to it in the future if need be.
Perfect.
I think it looks really good.
Yep, so you're just needing direction from us to go out?
To move forward with, yeah, putting out the public bid and then Jeff and I working with probably Bryce, we'll get, we'll take care of that. So we'll be back in front of you once we get the public notice and, yeah, the, and the final plans for that actual motion for moving forward with the public bid, so.
Sounds good.
It says discussion and consideration.
So we need a motion. Okay.
Okay, I would move that we go forward in seeking construction cost estimates for the Story County Sheriff Office Range House with the two alternatives separate as outlined in the documents.
Second. Been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
You. Excuse me. Now it's time for public comment number two, comments from the public, not on this agenda. The board may not take action on comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, if you're online, please raise your hand or go to the podium here in the meeting room. And seeing none, we will close public comment number two, liaison assignments committee meeting updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin, do you want to start?
Surely, um. This afternoon, we have, uh, the sheriff's office recognition, uh, tomorrow morning, um, annual township meeting before that's something on Main Street in Nevada. There's something going on and we also, I don't know if we're going to get that, because we also looks like we have a tile repair. Drainage district meeting? Yeah, okay. And tomorrow evening, county assessors conference board. Thursday, I will be on, um, K H O I, haven't gotten very many updates yet. So if anybody has one, I'll continue to receive them through the end of the day, Wednesday. And, um, I have a cert from meeting Thursday morning. And then we have a drainage district meeting, war and eleven, Thursday evening. And got a early meeting Friday and next Monday. I have another sheriff's office recognition on next Monday. We do those in threes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the week.
Supervisor Basil?
Yep, um, I have the sheriff's office recognition this afternoon and then Story County Housing Trust, uh, meeting this evening. I have a SIRHA meeting in Grimes. Tomorrow morning, Drainage District meeting, and then annual township meeting. Um, and then I'm hoping to have time to sit down with Leanne and, um. Just observe the ARPA bi-weekly reporting building, if that's still happening tomorrow. Um, and then Wednesday night, I, I have, um, a C C J executive committee meeting. Um, I don't know if both of you are able to be at the.
Yeah.
Okay, um, because I need to be at the C C J one, um. And then Thursday morning, I'm attending the Chambers Agriculture Breakfast. And then Thursday afternoon, I have a Naco Rural Action Caucus meeting. Thursday afternoon, um, there's, uh, an open house for the new women's facility for CFR in Fort Dodge. So I'm going to be running up there and then I'll be back here for Drainage District meeting for Warren eleven. Friday morning, I've got a Go Green Team meeting, um, and. Uh, I also have a Central Iowa Juvenile Detention meeting, so I'll probably miss the Go Green, because I've got to go to, I have to go to, um, Eldora, uh, for C I J D C. Um, a lot of driving this week, um, Monday, Sheriff's Office Recognition.
Thank you, um, so I have Sheriff's Office Recognition as well, I have appointment over in Ames today, and then I have a C I C S, our supervisors, meeting. Tomorrow I have the Drainage District for Boone one forty-three, story eight, the township meeting. Um, I have a meeting with Bryce as well, then I have an aging meeting in the afternoon, and then the conference board. Thursday, um, I have Aging Resources, the full board meeting, I have a workforce, the sub-finance subcommittee meeting. I have a meeting at Nevada with the Nevada School later in the afternoon, and then Warren eleven. Thursday night, Friday so far is open, but I'm sure that will change. And Monday, I'll actually be down in Des Moines all day, um, at the Capitol, and then I have a MICA board meeting that night, so busy. Busy week for all of us. Um, there is nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Haddon's, aye, we are adjourned.